Like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June 22, 2021. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protemshul.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenny.
Here.
All are present.
Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here today. We have two items on the agenda. The first one is Arizona Eco Development. And then the second one is a lease with Prescott Frontier Days. So we do have cards back here if you'd like for public comment. You get three minutes during public comment. So let's start with item 3A.
Arizona Eco Development Annexation and Development Agreement. Public comments for Statutory Public Hearing Meeting.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council and everybody in attendance. Some updates from last week I was asked to go through in the development agreement. And then I also have a sort of an answer to, I think, a question that's fairly common. And then also, I just wanted to let the public know that if you don't know already, that we have a list of questions and answers on the city website under the AED tab that I think are, we call them FAQs because they are frequently asked. So the quickest way to get an answer to if your question is one of those, I think, a dozen questions is go on the city website. And you should be able to get a, an answer. And I wrote the answers, but I wrote them in English, not legalese. So.
Thank you, John.
Hopefully that works. So let's start with a couple of changes we have to the development agreement. Open this one up. So I think I need a little help here. Well, maybe not. How do I? There we go. Okay, so one of the questions that came up over the last couple of weeks is the issue of vested rights. And we negotiated a change to the development agreement or revisions to development agreement that clarify, don't really change anything. But the language is revised to make it clearer for folks to understand. So a little bit of background, essentially, a vested right when it comes to, when it comes to property is a right that the government can't take away without paying just compensation. It's a takings if it, if it's, if that right is taken away. So what the language says, the new language, at such time as any applicable referendum period has passed, or if a referendum is filed and is unsuccessful by reasons of vote, court action, or otherwise, developer shall have a vested right to develop the property in accordance with the agreement. The MDP is in the zoning. So what that means is that the developer or AED does not have any rights in this development agreement to do anything, with one exception, until the 30 days has passed, until the referendum period has passed. That's the, that's the clarifying language. Now, the one thing I said there was an exception is that the developer does, or AED does have one right in that 30-day interim period, and that is if there is a referendum filed, AED has the right to then demand by in writing that the council rescind all of the prior votes. So in order to avoid the referendum altogether. And the council under statute has the authority to do that, to simply revoke the approvals if a referendum is started or is successful in getting the signatures.
So John, hold on. Can I ask a question? So in plain English, that means that if, in fact, we have voted yes to move forward with the annexation. And within that 30-day period, the developer says, you know, I don't think that I have a chance in hell of getting this thing done before the public, so I'm pulling out. Does that, that means that he has no vested rights at all to perform, and the city has no obligations to perform?
That would be correct. So the corollary to that section. There it is. I'm going to bring it back down here is Section 5.9C. Trying to pop this up, but for some reason it's not moving. There we go. Hold on. There it goes. Okay, so 5.9C is the corollary to that prior part of the agreement. And that basically reiterates that if there is a referendum filed during that 30-day period, the developer writes under this section vests immediately upon approval. It wouldn't, in other words, it has to exist, the right has to exist on day one, otherwise it would be, it would be meaningless. So that's, that's that section. So those two kind of work together. The other the other one, I think, which I think is probably, those are sort of technical, although they were concerns by, by various people. Trying to grab this for some reason. Okay, so the other, those are sort of technical issues. The other one. I don't know. Is more, is more of substance than I think, which, again, this addresses some public concerns. So this is regarding the resort and the, and the and the grade separated crossing question. So and it also deals with an issue that people have raised about the city code or the land development code and what has to be filed as part of the zoning ordinance. So the way the zoning ordinance reads for a master plan, for a LDC, SPC zoning, there's a point in time in order to develop that, that the applicant has to file a master plan. And the, and the land development code has three different points in time where that can happen. One is at, as part of the zoning ordinance, two is as, prior to issuance of a building permit, and three is prior to issuance of a, of a grading or site disturbance permit. So the, in sort of order of process, it would go zoning ordinance would happen first, and then in this case, the grading and site disturbance permit would happen second, and the building permit would happen third. So in this case, if there's no master plan submitted as part of the zoning, it would have to occur prior to the grading and site disturbance permit being issued. In other words, the, we will know through a public process what this resort is going to look like in terms of a master plan before any permits issued to do any work on that property, including grading. So that, so that should sort of alleviate some folks' concerns. So the second part is dealing with the grade separated crossing. So as we all know, the letter of intent did grant the developer a, I guess you could call it a right, but did agree in a non-binding agreement, it did agree that the developer had the right to a at-grade crossing. But, you know, and at that point, everybody who came out to talk about the letter of intent agreed with the letter of intent. After that, and subsequent to that, and as part of the development agreement, folks came out and said, well, we really don't like that, even though it was in a letter of intent. We don't like that. We want a grade separated crossing. So last week, we talked about a, a solution where it still referenced the developer's right to at-grade crossing, but it said that the, that there would be a grade separated crossing if one of two things occurred. And that is the CFD are formed and the CFD funds the at-grade crossing cost, or if a CFD is not formed, Community Facilities District, then the city would pay the difference between the grade, the at-grade and the grade separated. This language has now changed to commit the city to, to the, to the grade separated crossing and funding it one of two ways, Community Facilities District, or if the county, and again, the creation of the Community Facilities District is a function of a council vote. So the council gets to choose a Community Facilities District, which would fund this and other infrastructure. Or in this case, if that's not approved, then the city would pay the difference between the cost of an at-grade and the cost of a, a grade separated. And remember, the language that talks about, which has always been in the agreement, subject to topographic and safety considerations at a location of the city's choosing, that language still applies in terms of the grade separated crossing. So it really, it's going to be at a location that makes sense for both the city and the resort to cross presumably under the pevine trail for vehicular traffic.
John, who would pay for the CFD?
The CFD cost is paid for by the CFD. It's the bond issuance. So when the bonds are issued, all of the lawyers and things, they'll get paid out of the bond issuance.
Are they paid for by a certain group of people?
Oh, the, oh, you're, I'm sorry. The creation of the CFD is funded by, by the bond issuance. And then all of the costs for the creation are funded out of that, that. But the CFD is the, the landowners in the district. And in this case, it's going to be, it could be South Parcel and North Parcel and the, what we call the Granite Estates Parcel. The CFD does not have to be contiguous. It's a little unique.
So the CFD wouldn't be paid for by the population of Prescott as a whole. It would be paid for by specific groups.
If you think about it as a special improvement district on steroids, that's what a Community Facilities District is. It can do, most special, special improvement districts are created to do one thing, streetlights, water lines, streets. This, a Community Facilities District can do all of those things. It's a, it's a creation of state law. And yes, it's, it's, so the, the funding of that, it basically is, is by way of an additional property tax assessment on the, on the properties that are located in the district. And, and in this case, the district would be limited to AED land. In, in this, again, whether it's one of those parcels, two of them, or all three.
Okay. Doesn't affect the general taxpayer, I think is what you're saying.
Or, and it doesn't affect, and I'll get into this too, it doesn't affect things like water rates and sewer rates and ratepayers. You know, who, in terms of the, the use of water and sewer.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, John, my other question is this. It seems like there's an issue of trust with particularly the resort. Basically, those are, it's an SPC zoning. People are afraid that, okay, we got SPC zoning now. But at some point in the future, some future council would say, well, we're rezoning it to single family or to multifamily or whatever. What, what kind of assurance can we give people that that most likely won't happen?
Okay, so two things. One is the SPC, the reason we're doing SPC lodging, specific to lodging, is because, because Prescott's zoning is inclusive. So if, if we zoned it business, it would, it would conceivably allow for everything less than that, you know, including residential multifamily. So the SPC lodging is limited to lodging use. The second is that the agreement, the agreement also says that the water allocated to the parcels K and L are, is limited to use as a resort or lodging. So even if it's rezoned, you, the, the city would have to go back in to the development agreement and amend that part, too. All of that would have to go through, what I suspect would be a massive public process. Would have to, the rezoning would have to go through Planning Commission, would then would have to go to council. The development agreement would have to go to council to amend that water provision. The, the rezoning is legislative, so it would be subject to referendum. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of checks and balances in this, in this agreement and, and in the law.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that and that, you know, while it possibly could happen, it most likely wouldn't?
Well, I'll just say this. I think there's, from what I've, what I've heard during these negotiations, there's concern on the AED side that the opposite could happen, that the city, some, some city council goes rogue and decides, we're going to change things, we're not going to do things, we're not going to follow through. So that's why this agreement is, is heavily, entirely, I should say, based on mutual performance. Both sides have to perform. So, so because again, the, the sort of lack of trust runs both ways, is my, is my takeaway on this. Last but not least, there are some changes that will be made. We're still working on the, so we don't have, I don't have a final look, but we're still, we're still working on the issue that's, that's connected to the severance transfer of the 375 acres of, of surface water in Watson Lake that goes to the city. The reason it's still being worked on is because SRP is now involved. And so later this week, there'll be a multi-party sort of discussion trying to resolve the issue.
Mayor, did, Craig D. has spoken directly to SRP. I don't know if you wanted him to come and share with the public to alleviate some of their concerns, if that would be okay with you?
Yeah, that'd be great. And I know John, haven't the attorneys been talking to SRP as well?
Yes.
So either one, yeah, Craig, if you want, or, or John.
Yeah, let me, as Craig's walking up, I can also say this, that, that the agreement, again, the other concern about the severance transfer was that it's tied to the easements for Section 33. The city acquiring easements, again, at developers' cost, but the city has to acquire those to water and sewer, Section 33. So the, the connection is that at the point where the city gets those easements, then the severance transfer process begins. And then in the, in the, in the agreement, as it currently reads, and we're again, we're working on clarifying language, there's a three-year timeframe. And I want to make this clear, the three-year timeframe is not to complete the severance transfer. The three-year timeframe is to acquire those easements. Then the agreement says, and, and this is going to be clarified, that if, if the city can't acquire those easements in the three years, the developer has no obligation to sever and transfer the 375 back. At the same time, the city has no obligation to further effort, to do, make further efforts to get those easements. So the city then has no obligation to provide water and sewer to Section 33, which is 170 acre feet of water, give or take. So it's, it's a mutual pact, if you will, that, that, you know, if, if AED's obligation goes away, so does the city's. So that, so, so again, you're, you're trading off 375 acre feet of surface water, which may or may not translate into 170 acre feet of actual groundwater. There's a whole calculation that has to happen.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So yes, along the lines with the severance and transfer, SRP will be a party of that review. They also have rights as, so there are the 375 acre feet that Grand Dale's Ranch holds. The city has rights to water within Granite Creek, SRP does as well. So when the severance transfer comes forward from ADWR, ADWR will reach out to SRP for review of and consideration of that. That was one of the items that they were interested in. They are interested in that water going to recharge, as, as we are all considering in there, as well as then it was clear in, in talking with them that we don't talk enough. They, they did not have the vision of, of everything that we as a city are doing transferring our water production demands from the Chino wells to the airport area as we continue to improve those, those wells in that area. And so they are interested in, in seeing us move more of the water demands closer to the recharge facility away from the little Chino aquifer and the, and the Chino wells. So those were kind of the, the three main things that we will continue talking with them about on Thursday.
Very good. Thank you, Craig.
So just wrapping up at least my presentation, th- these are questions, especially the first one, is what's this going to cost the city? We hear, we hear that question, heard that question a lot. So I wanted to address those issues. But I also wanted to address it in, in context of what's it going to cost, what are, what are the city's costs that we're committing to? What's the developer committing to? And what benefits does the city receive?
John, before you get into that, I think one of the other public concerns is, is that that 375 acres goes to permanent recharge?
It can't.
It can't?
Cannot. It's, it's, the, the 375 acre feet of surface water can't go to permanent recharge as a function of, of water law. It has to go into groundwater, so that, so it can be used in lieu, it has to go into the ground, so it can be used in lieu of groundwater. And that's SRP's primary, I think, substantive issue is, is that there's this sort of implication or discussion that the surface water is going to be used for permanent recharge, and it just simply can't be that way.
What can it be used for?
Can be used for recharging and then using in lieu of groundwater.
Okay, okay.
So the other thing I wanted also to make clear, there were some comments last week, is that the 375 acre feet is a water right. It is more than a mere claim. It was adjudicated, I think, in 1926 between a rancher who is the predecessor to AED, the owner of the 375, and the, and the predecessor to the CVID, what's called the Chino Valley Agricultural something or other. Anyway, they litigated the issue. And that 375 was determined by an Arizona court here, here in Prescott. It was a right that's prior to any other right on that lake or on that reservoir. So, so I just want to make that clear. So the question then comes up is what, what are the costs that the city's committing to? What's the cost, what are the costs that developers committing to? And what benefits does the city receive? Okay, so I'm going to go through this section by section to show costs for, that the city is sort of committing to. And this, this, we've already talked about this, that the, that the grade separated crossing is a cost that we're committing to if we don't approve a Community Facilities District, that we're going to pay the difference. So that's a cost. The actual sort of dollars and cents, we don't know because it's heavily based on the location. The greater the grade separation is between the trail and the, and the ground, the less expensive it's going to be. And as you move north, the topography gets flatter. So, so that's a cost that we would commit to, again, at the choice of the council, if it's, if it chooses, and which it has the right to do, to not create the Community Facilities District. Okay, this is a big one, and this is in Sections 2.6, who's 2.14 in the development agreement. The developer or the developer's CFD will pay for and construct all public and private infrastructure. No city funds, no water funds, no sewer funds or street funds will be used to pay for infrastructure. I would guess that's tens of millions of dollars, if not more, hundreds of millions, maybe, if you think about the scope and scale of, of this development. So no city funds in any kind of account, any kind of fund are going to go pay for infrastructure. That's a big one. And then local streets, we've talked about this, will be owned and maintained either by the CFD or by the HOA. So we're sort of taking those off the maintenance books, if you will, snow plowing, fixing, those kinds of things. They'll be sort of private streets or CFD streets maintained by the HOA. Now, that's not every street because some of them are going to need to be, you know, collectors and those kinds of things. And so those will remain city public streets because they'll be used by the general public. Okay, Granite Creek Crossing. The city is agreeing to acquire the, the bridge, and then it will, you know, will, I'm sorry, my bad. Granite Creek Crossing. Granite Creek Crossing is the low-water crossing FIP and Trail. That is a development impact fee project. So even though it's the city sort of paying for it, it's really growth paying for it because it's funded by development impact fees that are collected every time a, a building permit is, is, is issued. That's part of the fee. So, so it is a, it is a growth paid for cost. The old bridge that the city intends to acquire from the county, there will be, there may be a cost to sort of do some refurbishing and those kinds of things. And, and the cost of that will be, will be paid probably or primarily by the city. There is a possibility that if a Community Facilities District is, is created, that it could fund, you know, improvements to that. It just depends on the, the extent of what it needs in terms of improvements. And I'll, and I'll qualify by saying that the bridge refurbishment, the vehicular use of, of that is limited to city vehicles, emergency, emergency or maintenance type vehicles, unless this environmental library is, is approved and, and built. Then it'll allow for some more public crossing of that bridge. So if no, if there's no environmental library or learning center, then the bridge is primarily pedestrian, equestrian, or bicycle. Okay. So another sort of city commitment is that there's the 131 acres that we've seen on maps that is essentially the runway extension property. And that will be paid by the city in this process where we agree on an appraiser, and the appraiser determines the price. But that, again, to emphasize, is 95 to 100% funded or reimbursed by FAA grant money. So again, it's the city, although the city's paying for it, there is a reimbursement of, of up to 100%. Purchase of the, of the W parcel we talked about. So last week, we talked about 116 acres. It's actually grown to 159 acres. At, and, and the, the comp price is out there at about 100,000 an acre for smaller parcels was discounted by 15% because it's a larger parcel. So that's, so it's 85, it's about 85 an acre, but the 85 an acre is charged only against the original 116 acre purchases. So the other 40, the other 40 acres, 43 acres that's added, is essentially thrown in to that purchase price of $9.8 million. It comes to about 60,000 an acre. So that's where you get 159, where you get, that's where you get the $9.8 million purchase. Again, a qualifier, that 43 acres is, is airport land. So that is 90, again, 95 to 100% reimbursed, that part of the purchase price, 43 times 60,000 is reimbursed by FAA through grants.
Because it's inside the fence, right, John?
It's sort of straddles it, so we can move it inside the fence, the whole thing inside the fence for airport use. Maybe it could be either runways, taxiways, or airport industrial hangars and things like that. It all, that's all dependent on the master plan and what, what the airport director and others decide to use it for.
And John, I think people are concerned that, okay, we, we're buying this W land. But what I think we need to make clear to people is, is that we can develop it.
Well, that's my next point. So right now, we met, we announced this last week, of the 116, so you take the 43 out of the mix, you have 116 left. We right now are in negotiations with a very, very serious buyer who's going to develop an employment site of, from 200 to 300 employees and essentially buy 30 acres and pay the city what the city, per acre, what the city's paying to AED. So we're getting back, I forget the math on it, a couple of, another two, well, yeah, million eight. So, so, and again, it's, the purpose of it is, is job creating. So if you take their FAA reimbursement and the 30-acre sale, and that 30-acre sale, there's a desire to close on that sale at the same time the city acquires the W parcel, which is the same time the city acquires the 474 in the Dells. So if you take that 9.8, you take those two factors, it pretty much cuts it to about five. And the city has 86 acres left of the W parcel to sell for development. So it's
That's industrial development.
Industrial development. Yeah, right. Can be aviation or airport related, or simply straight industrial out there.
And on that purchase price, Michael, are you doing some work with a commercial Realtor to get some calls?
We had some internal numbers that I've shared with a couple of you that we're not sure that their market rate, they were 32 an acre. But to ensure that we're actually talking about the value of land in 2021 out at the airport, I've done some outreach to some private sector industrial real estate folks to get their take. I don't have anything back yet. back yet. I would hope that I would have something back in advance of a vote.
Seems like there'd be some relevant comps here recently out there in that area.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my question and my comment on that is similar. Making, I mean, this number now is almost getting etched in stone. And I want to make sure that the true and legitimate value is justified. So I know I reached out and asked that our real estate specialists in the city take a look at those comps and make sure that the number that we're committing to is a number that we can truly feel that is a legitimate value.
Completely reasonable request, Council.
Excessively high.
Yeah. And his number, as I said, was 32 and change an acre, and I'm not sure that's a valid number. So we really need to get a number from the private sector that's going to have a better understanding of what the value of land is around the airport. Short of an appraisal, we need something from somebody that's in this business every day, in my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, good.
So the next, this is, this goes into sort of the benefit column slash AED commitment, and that's the 270 acres of land at the airport that we're getting. And that's sort of circles around that 131 or, you know, sort of a U-shaped round, as you recall the maps. And that was estimated to be one and a half to $2 million in value that the city's getting without paying for. And the reason that it's that, it's not more, is that it's almost impossible to access because of the land is almost impossible to access because of the Granite Creek. So it's, there's very little physical access in order to get to it, other than from the airport itself. And that, and again, the development agreement is very clear that it's to be used as public open space and airport use. That's in the agreement itself. Okay. South parcel, again, this goes into the benefits column and it goes into the AED commitment column. 474 acres of land that the city gets as part of this deal. And right now, we've revised the agreement, as I discussed last week, so that the closing of this occurs not more than 30 days after the referendum period simultaneous to the purchase of the W parcel. So we've moved it from 130 plus 120 to 30 plus less than 30. And I pointed that out in the second paragraph.
John, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
The public looks at that plus minus after the 474 and goes, okay, plus minus what?
Well, the survey says-
The survey says-
473.7.
How much?
473.7 acres.
Okay.
So it's just easier to write it this way. And again, originally, we said 475 plus or minus, and as I showed last week, I don't have it on the slide here, is that, is that we have sort of two parcels. We have the main parcel, the 461 or something like that, 463. And then there's the two sort of other parcels that are, that are near the highway, near 89. And that was originally thought to be about 12 acres. It turns out it's a little over 10. That's the discrepancy between the 475 plus or minus to the 474 plus or minus. But the, you know, rest assured that the actual legal description that was created by a surveyor is part of the agreement that shows 473.7 acres. And that's the land that gets, that legal description gets attached to the deed, and that's what the city ends up owning if this, you know, if this deal is approved. The other thing the city gets is the easement, or the trail easement between the Granite Creek Old Bridge and the Fippen Trail. So that's going to be in that, again, I'm sort of asking you to visualize that green strip that's private open space along the western boundary of the southern parcel, and we'll get a trail easement through there. And then, of course, the city will construct the trail, and there may be costs involved in that or not. But that's a, I guess you consider that a cost. And that is valued at about six and a half to seven million, that 474, not the trail easement. And that's based on what the city has recently paid in this area. So then again, that's a huge get, if you want to talk about just dollars and cents in this context. Another potential cost is up to three acres to be purchased by the city for the environmental library. Again, we have no master plan. We have no specific plan. We don't know whether we need no acres, one acre, or up to three. So we have, we have basically a year to figure it out and negotiate a purchase price. It could, the purchase price could be a donation up to less than market or market. It all just depends on precisely what land the city needs from AED to complete this project. So that could be considered a cost. North Peavine Trail Easement, we talked about this before. This is an easement that goes for, how many miles?
Totally six.
Six miles, 30 feet wide through AED land at no cost to the city in terms of the acquisition of the easement. The city will still have to construct the trail or do improvements to the trail and build some fencing on each side because there's cattle operation out there. But at the end of the day, this is another sort of get that the city gets of land at no out-of-pocket cost. And that's the, so that's the, that's the map of that trail. And that is, so that should answer the question, what is this going to cost the city? That's, that presentation addressed that question in the development agreement. And after that, Mayor, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Michael, anything else from your perspective? Or I know, Joe, previously you did the park. No real updates on that, I suppose, at this point.
I think it's part, maybe there's some value to talking about cost and benefit that how we arrived at the acreage and the acre feet was based on evaluation associated with an acre foot of water and the market was, it basically set by Mr. Geese. And that's how some of these figures were determined and the size of this acreage was determined. You know, it's been so long, I think sometimes we forget, a lot of this wasn't just pulled out of the air, so.
Okay. Councilmember Rosin?
Thank you. I'd like to hear from our airport director, Ms. Sabata, and I'm sure the members of the public would like to hear from her, maybe talk a few minutes about the importance of our airport and what an economic driver it is for the community and how important it is that the north parcel and the W are for our industrial park and how the airport is so wonderful for our Emory Riddle relationship too, and how important the expansion is for that.
It's a long list. Great job on the, great job on the grand opening, by the way. It was a lot of fun.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it was a very exciting time. And it is, it is a very exciting time right now around the airport. And Robin Sabata, airport director here, yes, I think this is an amazing deal for the future of the airport. And I think we have to look at this as a package of amenities altogether that will help the future economic development of the Prescott area. And frankly, our regional partners as well are going to be benefiting from the type of proposal that we have in front of us. One of the things we're looking at is the extension for the runway. We did talk about that being approximately 400 acres. That is necessary for the extension of the runway. We are a hot and high airport, and because of that, we do need a runway extension. We did have a situation last week in which over half of our seats were restricted because of the high temperature and the elevation combined. And that's very challenging. And what we learned from our partners at the FAA is frankly, the average temperature is increasing from an average of 90 to 93 as we're using our new projections. And because of that, we will need even more runway length. That'll be one item. The W parcel presents some really interesting opportunities. I do appreciate the fact that we removed the TTF as an item of discussion because that always can be contentious. And we're looking at a future right now of about $103 million over six years that's going to be invested in the airport. That does not include the air traffic control tower, a potential strengthening of the runway for the US Forest Service Prescott firefighter operations. That is also something that we may consider. The W parcel, I think, has interesting possibilities both for a possible aviation entity, one that is simply industrial, or one that may evolve from, say, a ground transportation to an aviation-related entity. We have to look at how the airport is going to grow in the future. What we're looking at right now is 19 years ahead of schedule. We have hit, or will hit this year, our 2040 projection for aircraft operations at this airport. Emory Riddle has invested more than $40 million in aircraft, and we are going to see an increase from two years ago of 25,000 flight hours to 50,000 flight hours at the Emory Riddle operation. They are increasing from 39 aircraft to 75 aircraft. What that means is the future growth of the airport, that type of development, turns into a major economic generator, as evidenced by the 200 jobs you mentioned from the W parcel entity, as well as the possibility for some expansion on the north side, which I think is needed as well. So all of the items with this are very exciting. And so we appreciate the, we appreciate the thoughtfulness in taking the airport to consideration and also considering the airport's protection for its future growth as being an important part of what we're doing.
Robin, can you explain to the public TTF and how it relates to the W?
Sure. TTF stands for Through the Fence Operations. What that essentially is, is an access permit. It's not so simple as being called a hole in the fence. What it essentially is, is the rights for an entity that is not physically based on the airport to be able to access the airport for takeoffs and landings. Because the FAA has a requirement with our grant assurances that we are as self-sufficient as possible, we are required to derive revenue and hold those entities outside of the airport fence to at least at the same level or a higher level than those competing within the airport borders. So it is a fairly restrictive situation, and the FAA will always review those and notify us whether or not we could potentially violate our grant assurances. With so much at stake in the future in terms of grant assurances, we want to make sure that we don't violate those grants. Okay?
Thank you, Robin. Appreciate the update. Thank you.
And I appreciate the thoughtful help of the council. The navigation easements and other things are very, very helpful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to get to a public comment, but is there anything else the council would like to ask, John, or anybody else at this point, before we go to public comment? All right. There are public comment cards back here. If you want to fill all those out, bring it up to the city clerk. And then, Sarah, do you have folks on Zoom today that would like to speak?
I do. So I have got two individuals in the Zoom right now with their hands raised. And then I've now got six public comment cards, and then I do have that summary, if you'd like me to provide it, of the comments that have been submitted to council thus far. And then we can take it in whichever order you'd like after that, Mayor.
Yeah, let's do the summary that you have at this point, and then let's go to Zoom.
Okay. So as of 10:00 AM this morning, the number of comments received through the AED-council@prescott-az.gov, which was the email that we created especially for this development agreement comment period, was a total of 78 comments. And that is since we opened up the public comment period, I believe it's been almost a month now. There were a number of specific concerns that were raised. Council has seen all of these comments, and items discussed were water concerns, timing of transfer of open space, the trail crossing at the Peavine, extension of the public comment timeframe, agreements within the agreement provisions, rather, favoring the developer over the city, establishing the cost of land that city will be purchasing, more clearly defined terms, no increase in the number of development units, cell towers, and increased traffic in the area. In addition to the comments and questions received through that specific portal, there have also been comments sent in to council's administrative staff, which have been forwarded as well. And we were at a total of 21 to council for those, and 16 to the city manager, and 25 to the mayor. It should also be noted that a number of those comments were duplicative. So a lot of people sent comments through the AED council email to council through our website portals. So there was a lot of duplicate, but that is a total number.
Very good. Let's go to Zoom.
All right. We will start with Larry Springer. Can unmute yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Good afternoon. I am Larry Springer. I live in Prescott. I have reviewed the draft development agreement, and there's not a single reference to providing telecommunications services to the thousands of new residents, resort guests, and recreational users of this massive expansion of the city of Prescott. During the past year, the Prescott City Council has stated in council and study sessions that the public demand for broadband, cell service, streaming service, et cetera, is of ever-increasing importance to the city of Prescott. That being the case, why is the city not mentioned in this draft how and where telecommunications facilities are to be located to fill this new demand? At the last study session, Mr. Geese stated that he did not know even if there was good cell service or no cell service in this AED area. How can it be that no one has evaluated the cell service needs in this area and how it will be addressed? There must be a pre-approved telecommunications service plan in this draft agreement so Prescott residents can be assured that our neighborhoods and property values will not be compromised by ugly cell towers to service the annexed area. Mr. Geese said he would be okay with locating cell towers after the agreement is finalized. No, it needs to be done now and prior to finalizing this agreement. Prescott residents have made known, may have made efforts to restrict the construction of massive cell towers within our existing neighborhoods, all to be told many times by the city attorney that would be equivalent to restricting service, with which we disagree. Putting them in our existing Prescott neighborhoods to provide service to this new designer community is not an equitable way to do it. Planning and zoning stated on October 29, 2020, that they want to see new development include pre-planning for wires, facilities, construction. I'm reading my speaker card this week because it was not allowed to be read to the public last week, as is usual process for a speaker card. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Mr. Mechanic, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I appreciate the city responding to the frequently asked questions and dealing with those issues. There are some infrequently asked questions that are also important, and I'd like to know if we're going to get answers on those. Specifically, there was an issue discussed last week, and I also put a question in writing on the city's website and haven't seen an answer on that. It's a minor issue, but there's a principle here. The city has development standards for everyone. As far as landscaping with low water usage plants, we have a lot of beautiful plants in the area that are low water usage plants. I see no reason whatsoever for the city, in my understanding, because this is in the agreement, because it was discussed last week, you can correct me if I'm incorrect, and Mr. Geese responded that you don't have to worry if he's using the high water use plants because he's going to pay for the water. Now, there's a principle here. It doesn't matter who's paying for the watering as far as plants in the right of way and medians. We're not talking about plants in a backyard. We're talking about vegetation in the right of way and the medians. That was what was discussed. And I heard Mr. Geese say it's okay because he's paying for the watering. Why did the city agree to bend its development standards? I see no reason whatsoever to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Do you have any other Zoom, Sarah?
I do not, Mayor.
John or others, you want to address both of these real quick, a little bit telecom and the median?
Let me address the second one first. That's, that, the statement is just not accurate. The agreement requires, this, this development will follow our standard land development code, general engineering standards, water requirements, water policies, building codes, you name it. It's not a, it's unlike Deepwell, which is probably similar, maybe, well, actually it's a smaller scale, which created its own sort of development standards. This is by the book, literally by the book, our existing book. And that book requires that all, any plants, whether it's private open space, whether it's individual yards, you know, and medians, well, I'll get to medians in a second, that they have to follow the city's policy, which is a plant pallet- a second, that they have to follow the city's policy, which is a plant pallet that is an ADWR approved plant pallet, which are low water use plants. So there is, so I think the statement's inaccurate that Mr. Geese said that it doesn't matter what I plant, I'll pay for the water. It's not the case because, and that's also a different context. I'll also emphasize that the section 33, which probably will be at Prescott Valley, the owners, the users there again, agree to follow the city's plant pallet, the low water ADWR plants. So they have to follow, and all of our other water use policies. As far as the medians and sort of roadways, our current policy is zero scape and it's probably should be spelled Z E R O, zero scape. There's no landscaping, it's gravel. Now, there's an exception to that, that if the, if a developer wants to put in some landscaping in the medians and I'll give you Prescott Lakes, for instance, that they still have to follow that plant pallet, that ADWR approved plant pallet. But the developer has to, or the homeowner association eventually, has to pay for the maintenance in the water and replacement if plants die and all those kinds of things. So this, there's no exception in this agreement to, or bending of the rules to allow for non-plant pallet plants to be put in. And again, we have a general reference to ADWR because that tends to change over time. As far as the cell tower issue goes, the cell tower locations are driven by the industry. And that's just, that is just the way it is. We, we could sit there and pinpoint where we think there should, cell towers should go, but we probably guessed wrong. We just don't have the technological knowledge to be able to decide that. And again, it all depends on the demands, where the population is, the topography, all those things come into play. Regardless of that, any cell tower applicant still has to go through the city's process for cell towers, for the traditional monopole type cell towers, as well as small cell facilities. So, so there isn't, and again, I can't address whether or not the, the cell tower and sort of beyond the scope, whether the provisions in, for special use permits and cell towers may or may not change in the future, that's sort of well outside the scope of this. But again, cell towers go where the industry believes they need to go, but they don't have an unfettered ability to put it anywhere they want. They still have to go through the process. And our code currently allows for cell towers, both in residential, commercial, and industrial, again, based on our topography. So, so, you know, again, there's no way, there's no practical way to, or legal way for that matter, to, to pre-pinpoint cell tower locations, just can't be done.
Mayor, could I add something just from a common sense perspective? As John talks about topo, you know, the nature of the topography from AED's buildable property north is flat. The idea that somehow that a tower in town that's in a more mountainous region is going to provide services to the flatlands, I don't think is commonsensical. I mean, I think, I'm not a cell tower expert, but the most likely scenario is the tower placement's going to go in Prescott North where the land is flat and this site is 360 degrees.
And remember, there's, it's not just residential, there's industrial, there's commercial land, but we also have to take into consideration airport for height restrictions. So all of those things have to come into play, but ultimately, the issuance of a special use permit to go above an allowed height in whatever zoning district has to go through the public process.
Good. That's our form. All right, we will go to public comment here in person. You do have three minutes. If you haven't filled out a public comment card, please do that and hand it up here to the city clerk and we'll get started.
Dee Carter Labarge.
We'll try to do our best to kind of answer as we go here.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Dee Carter Labarge, voter from Prescott. The amount of red lines and the additional development discussions that, that you folks are going through, so close to your voting date after four years tells us that you're nowhere near ready to vote on this issue. There needs to be a lot more information discussed and brought to light before you guys bring this to a vote. That being said, the city has stated that we have a hundred year supply of water and this gives us an opportunity, or some might say a mandate, to continue with expansion and development until the water is gone. Has the city compiled a report reviewing the well hydrographs for all the wells serving the city from 1950 to the present? We'd like to see this information. According, according to the fourth management plan, the Prescott AMA has been in an overdraft amount of around 9,000 acre feet per year from 1985 to 2012. What has our annual overdraft been from 2012 to 2020? And what's the current overdraft in the Prescott AMA for this calendar year? In calendar year 2007, when this was developed, the Prescott AMA had a total water demand of 8327 acre feet. The project demand for 2023 was 16397 acre feet and 20,675 acre feet by 2027. This was all based on a total number of 1,011 new home lots submitted to the ADWR and an additional number of 3,527 home lots that could be submitted. How many acre feet did we use in 2020 and what's the revised estimate for 2027 according to that? Now that we have far surpassed the new home estimates, we're now reaching, I believe, somewhere near 15,000 homes planned for the next decade? How has this changed our estimates for subdivisions eligible, eligible to receive groundwater allowances? And how has this been extrapolated to our 100-year water supply? And finally, what happens in year 101 for that? So, there are also several sections of the DA that speak to section 33 and additional property. The DA allows the AED to come back to the city at their discretion to amend this agreement in whole or in part, to add additional properties in or out of the city. This additional property, once in the agreement, may increase the total number of residential uses on the property. This includes city cooperation to get the necessary land use approvals, but not limited to any necessary amendments to the MDP or this DA. This also opens the door for AED to enlarge the scope of this agreement from time to time. After four years of thoughtful negotiations, the scope of this agreement should be rock solid and stand alone. If there are other properties AED is thinking about, it should be already on the table. Any new properties is a new DA, including public review. This DA, I believe, also adds the question of precedent to the equation. Once you vote to approve this DA for AED, the city becomes open to any other developer with a few acres in the city and additional property located nearby. Will we be defending this DA long into the future? I raise again the issue of up to three acres for the library. AED has stated that they're not inclined at the moment to negotiate for the library acreage because it's grade A land. This tells us voters that the city council will pay a premium for this land later, after the DA has been signed. So maybe we need to slow down and let's take a thoughtful review of this. We're not hell bent for leather. We don't have to have this thing done by the 13th of July. It looks like there's a lot more studying that needs to be done by this, by this board.
Thank you.
Tom Collins.
Hang on just a second. So let me clarify the additional land comment, and that is, the opposite of what was said is actually true. First of all, the additional land provision identifies two parcels. Section 32, which is currently state trust land, and what we're referring to is the eastern third of Granite Dell's estates. That, for a bunch of reasons, that property may, may be moot. So, but most importantly, is that the section that talks about additional land is 100% discretionary in the city, not the developer. If you, if you read the agreement, it says that the city, if it determines, it's in, in its discretion determines that adding additional land to the development agreement is in the city's best interest, then you can, then we can add additional land to, under both the obligations and the rights in the development agreement, to, you know, to amend the agreement. And then further, there's no guarantee of anything to that additional land. In other words, the development on the property, additional water to the property, utilities to the property, all of that stuff has to go through the city process as part of, presumably part of amending the agreement to add, let's say, for instance, section 32. And then last but not least, I think if you, if you know section 32, it has some value to the city in that it's not just, it's probably not just residential. I think there's a big swath that's likely commercial. And, and again, we all sort of know that rooftops drive commercial. So, so I think there's some benefits to that because the other option is section 32 could be annexed into Prescott Valley. And then at Prescott Valley, we get the benefit of, of that. So hopefully that clarifies.
Yep. No, very good. Yes, go ahead.
So John, I think that the fear from people is that with additional land being added, there would be additional single-family rooftops added also. And doesn't it say that we have water for residential uses, but only a certain amount of water?
Right. So the concept for adding section or including section 32 as a potential additional land is that the current water allocation in this agreement probably won't be all used up. And so if there's sort of extra water, extra unallocated water that isn't used up on the current, in the current parcels, then that could be moved to section 32 if it's added into the development agreement. Again, at this, at that first part, the adding into the agreement is at the city's sole discretion. Any additional water, any, in any development, the zoning, commercial, single-family, multifamily, industrial, whatever, has to go through, you know, the zoning, or the annexation and zoning process in order for, for development rights to accrue to the property. So there's a lot of discretion in the city if, to first of all, decide whether we want to add section 32 at, at the developer's request. And then if you add it, how much extra water do you give it? What kind of development do you demand or do you allow? You know, all those things go through the approval process by, by the city council.
Yeah, you raise good questions. I think myself and this, largely this council is very concerned about our future water supply. And I think one thing you have to contemplate is private property owners in the county have certain rights guaranteed by the constitution and growth is coming. And do you want it in the county or the city? And that's kind of what we're wrestling with as we sit here with an annexation, is would you like our plant pallet that was spoken about earlier? Would you like to control the way this looks? Would you like the effluent from those homes going back to recharge? Those kinds of things that will then help the viability of our aquifer moving forward. And so it's, it's kind of like, do you want wells and septics or do you want city water that then has a sewer system that recharges the aquifer? And I think those are the things that we're wrestling with to make sure that we have a viability of our aquifer moving forward because we're very concerned about that. Also Herb Dishlep did a great study recently for us on the future growth of Prescott and our water usage. And it was very enlightening and helpful for us in terms of planning in the future. So thank you for your comments. We'll move on.
Tom Collins.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak today. Thank you for bringing it up about the environmental library. That's what I'm going to talk about. Last week, the city manager or the city attorney, I'm not sure which, made a statement that was kind of bothered me. The statement was in regard to the three acres for the library. It was said, we had tried to get the land. We asked for those three acres and were told no. Sometimes you just don't get what you ask for. This council is acting as if the entire process is on a timer and you only have one minute or so to negotiate before the time runs out. You act as if after four years of negotiation, this is the best deal the city can get. And if we don't take it all, it's all lost. We did the best we can and now we have to sign this deal or AED might go away. You are negotiating for one of the most desired pieces of property in northern Arizona. AED wants this property deal. They need this property deal. Negotiating in good faith is a give and take as well and good, especially when you're backed into a corner and desperately need this deal to survive, the survival of the city. Is that what we are? I think you've forgotten that this annexation, this property swap for the development of the Dells may be the biggest development deal we have and the most contentious for the city in our lifetime. The consequences are not all benefits. This deal is not ready for you to give up and accept just because AED says they have given up enough and are done negotiating. Go back to the table, know that the crown jewel of Prescott, the Granite Dells, is available for development under the terms that the city desires for its residents. AED will be successful no matter what they have to negotiate in return for this opportunity. If they say they are not willing to negotiate and accept the cost of getting annexed into the best place in northern Arizona, then they are just not ready to develop in the Granite Dells city of Prescott. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, and it is weighty, I get it. We've been working with Arizona Eco Development in earnest since January, meeting every week. And, you know, I guess there's only one person that can speak to whether this is the best deal or not, and that would be the applicant. And we'll probably hear from him at the end of this meeting. But I do believe this is a really good deal for the city of Prescott and is very, very important for our future. So thank you for your comments.
Joe Trudeau.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Mayor, to respond to Mr. Palladini's presentation, in addition to our conversation yesterday, can I go over the three-minute allotment?
Well, let's see where you get. I want to just be sensitive to everybody else who wants to speak today.
Got it. Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Palladini, your explanation of the city expenses was helpful, for sure. If anyone has followed Save the Dells' public messaging and talks of the towns over the last four years, you would know that transparency and fairness to the taxpayer has been one of our key issues. So going forward, I would recommend that the city, in any agreements like this, provide that sort of point-by-point cost-benefit evaluation upfront. In addition, it would also be great to see what you presented in a tabular illustration, sort of a column side by side. That's all I'll say about that. Regarding the 375 acre feet of water, based on our conversations with SRP and, in addition to our conversations yesterday, Save the Dells rescinds all of our previous comments on, on the 375 acre feet, the conveyance, everything about it. And we look forward to further clarification from SRP and the city. It seems that all parties made assumptions that turned out to not be true and legal and factual based off of SRP's read on the situation and they're clearly the experts. So we look forward to discussing that further. However, one of the things that came out of our meeting yesterday, which I think is valuable that I don't want us to lose, is that there was an intent, there was the expression of interest from the public and the city that the 375 acre feet would be used as like dedicated aquifer recharge. What we discussed yesterday suggested that the city has the ability to dedicate or set aside another 375 acre feet within the city's portfolio to dedicated recharge. Because it was the interest and the intent of the parties to do this, but SRP has informed us we can't, we would encourage the city to look into the option of setting aside another 375 acre feet. Regarding the vested rights and the self parcel resort in your presentation, Mr. Palladini, we appreciate the attention that you've given to our concerns. And we feel that the modifications you've made at this point most likely do address Save the Dells' concerns fairly, though we still need to fully digest the materials you gave us yesterday and what we're hearing today. But we appreciate the progress made there. Now, during that, your discussion there, Councilor Shiski, you asked a good question about the assurance that the resort will be developed and not some other land use. I appreciate, that's, that's one of our concerns that we've stated many times. I appreciate the explanation you've given, Mr. Palladini. And the clarification you gave regarding the pevine trail crossing. Tentatively at this point, Save the Dells thinks that those are sufficient and, and we don't, we probably won't have any more to talk about with that other than in our private conversations as we go forward, future negotiation. It doesn't go as far as we would like, but I think all parties here, as part of the win-win-win, have to do some compromise, right? Now, one part of that explanation, Mr. Palladini, I would like to respectfully push back on is you implied that certain members of the public, which I took to be Save the Dells, walked back from a agreement in the LOI that walked back from a agreement in the LOI that, that an at-grade crossing was, was a right. We've heard many times that the LOI is a non-binding agreement. So I would interpret that as there are no really authentic rights conveyed in a non-binding agreement. And as a example of that, the LOI said nothing about tying the conveyance of the 475 acres in the Dells to the purchase of the W. And the LOI said nothing about the conveyance of the 270 acres of open space by the airport being tied to the purchase of the 133 acres. So there are, there are issues where the agreement as written goes beyond the LOI, and that's stuff that we're uncomfortable with, but it's kind of an example of you can't have your cake and eat it too. What I'm suggesting is the at-grade crossing was never a right of AED's. It was in a non-binding agreement. We're fine with that. We think that language you've developed right now satisfies our concern that a grade-separated crossing will be built. So I'll close by saying that Save the Dells is disappointed that the Dells' natural open space is tied to the purchase of the W. That was not expressed up until, we learned that basically three or four weeks ago. We're disappointed that the Dells' open space will not be conveyed to the city at the time of annexation and rezoning. We've made this abundantly clear. However, it's also clear to me that we won't see the DA amended at this point to resolve this issue satisfactorily to alleviate our concerns entirely that AED might, in some scenario, back out of conveyance of the 474 plus or minus acres. There appears to be a lack of will within either city or AED to provide the unambiguous, clear-as-day, non-legalese language that this is going to come to fruition. However, Mr. Palladini, you've assured us that you think the DA sufficiently provides that assurance. So as I said at our meeting yesterday, which I'm sorry, not all of you could have been there, we're going to have to agree to disagree on this language. We can't just keep beating this issue, all right? So I asked the mayor to his face, and I asked Mr. Lamar and Mr. Palladini, Ms. Scholl and Ms. Rusing, and Joe Baines, wherever he is, I asked them clearly if they had 100% confidence that as of the consummation of this annexation and rezoning, this whole deal, will the Granite Dells' open space be unequivocally conveyed to the city as natural open space? All of them present, all six, said yes, 100% confidence that the language of the DA provides that assurance. So we have to trust in this process. Because as, which is hard for us, because as we know, trust has been broken in the past specifically with the open space and roads tax, where the public trusted that a certain amount of money would be spent on open space. And in fact, it was very disproportionately spent on roads. Trust was lost. But at this point, it seems on this issue of the conveyance of the Granite Dells' open space, trust is all we have left because we can't agree on the language in the DA. Trust is all we have left. So I have asked you, the six of you that I spoke with yesterday respectfully, if you had confidence. You assured me you did, I appreciate that. Now, I would like to ask the gentleman in the back, Mr. Geese, if he too has 100% confidence and can provide AED's 100% assurance that his 473.7 acres of Granite Dells' open space will in fact be successfully conveyed in fee simple within 30 days of close of the referendum period as expressed in the DA. If we are to trust in this process, then I respectfully request that verbal assurance from AED. And then trust will be all we have and all we can hang our hat on, and we'll just have to go forward and hope for the best. So if you don't mind, Mr. Geese.
Well, Jason will speak at the end, but thank you.
Fine, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Just to clarify, I wasn't sort of diming out or sniping anybody in particular. And I agree with, with what Joe just said. He's correct that the LOI did not grant anybody any rights, the city nor AED. It was the framework for this agreement. And, and so we tried to follow that framework. Obviously, the framework changed as deals tend to do over time and, and complexity. But I certainly wasn't saying, alluding or alleging anything in the pejorative against, against the Save the Dells folks. But the reality is, is people sort of came out and said, we don't like the at-grade crossing, get rid of it. And, and so we were able to negotiate a way to, as Joe said, you know, it's a give and take process. We were able to negotiate a way to assure in the agreement that it would be a grade-separated crossing.
No, very good. And I think the bottom line with that is we got where we needed to go. You know, like whatever the LOI said and however we got where we are today, we have a grade-separated crossing where we're assured we know it's going to be paid for. So I think that's a good thing, and that's really the bottom line. Joe, I think your idea on the 375 out of our portfolio is definitely a worthy idea that we could pull and designate 375 to recharge. I think that makes a lot of sense because SRP won't let us do that. So that kind of takes that off the table. I think it's a great suggestion. I will stand by my word yesterday in terms of the conveyance of the 473.7, that I do believe we will receive that after the referendum period is over. And I just want to thank you and your willingness to get together and chat over the DA. It's been very helpful and I really appreciate it. So thank you and thank you for your comments today.
Mayor, can I say something about the W?
You bet, you bet.
You know, John, we keep talking about the W and how that's changed this whole situation. As I understand it, and I don't see Robin out there, but originally when the W was, was just part of the whole thing, the developer had plans to develop the W in certain ways. And we said, we can't accept that. And he said, well, then buy it. Is that, is that correct?
I don't want to jump, but I think it's more than that. And I, Mr. Trudeau is 100% correct. The LOI was a baseline, but it had, things have evolved and changed, and you just alluded to a change. Our expectation was we were going to be able to sell, to not, Jason was going to keep the W, get through the fence access, and we would work under those parameters. What we found out is it was in the best interest of both Mr. Geese and the city to explore the purchase. So over the course of, you know, 36, 48 months, you're going to have evolutions, you're going to have a baseline that you go back to. The W was something that changed, and he, Joe's 100% right in this regard. He wasn't exposed to that until very recently. And we've all had to adjust. And the other thing, he said that he's dead on, you have to reach a point where you can trust the people you're trying to negotiate with, otherwise you're never going to get a deal though.
And I would just echo what Robin said, and that is that through the fence, the grave, and I've, I've done them before in other places. They're really complicated and really contentious. And this one, the public didn't sort of see it, but it was ugly. It got really ugly, real fast. So I agree with Michael that ultimately that would have been, that could have been a deal breaker. So again, sort of getting creative, thinking outside the box, trying to solve problems. And that was the solution we came up with. And, and as you heard, you know, Robin's extremely excited about it. So, and she's the airport director, and that's, that carries, to me, that carries a lot of weight.
Okay, let's keep moving on public comment.
Steve Pearce.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I know most of you, and for the record, my name is Steve Pearce. I was raised 290 Sunset Park Drive, Prescott, Arizona. Graduated from high school here. When I went to the University of Arizona, there were more people at the University of Arizona than there were citizens in Prescott. So I've been here a little while, slightly longer than Mr. Blair. But quite a bit longer. In fact, we had kids in Little League together. But I support this project. I think it's a good, a good project for all of city. I think it's a good project for the citizens of Arizona, for the citizens of Prescott, and I support it. And I wish that you could move quicker on it and get this thing done. To my knowledge, you've been working on it for six years, and I think you beat, beat it to death. I think, yeah, you could probably keep working at it, but you're going to keep finding other things that you want to change, and somebody will complain about that at the same time. I think, I think I'm outspoken, so I'm going to say a few things, we'll step on a few toes probably, but I think Save the Dells is a ridiculous name. It should have been Preserve the Dells. Those are granite boulders. Nobody was ever going to destroy those. There's no way to destroy them. If you drill a well, you drill down to the bottom and it's granite. And you've got granite on the top here, and it's beautiful, and it's going to be preserved, and I think you're in the right direction on that. And I think after all, that's everything that you wanted to have happen. I think that's what people at Save the Dells wanted was to have happen. You're going to get water, the surface water, which I would have to take exception to SRP. When I was in office, they, they were afraid of me. They waited for eight years for me to be out of office before they could come back and start nailing Prescott again. And they're, they're the gorilla in the room, and they will get what they want. You know, originally you had 13,000 acre feet of water, and I think it's down to slightly under eight because of their courts, because of their threats. And they're, they're the bully in the room. Maybe they're standing behind me, I don't know. I think, I don't like to see people from out of town. I don't like to see billionaires sending money into Arizona in our statewide elections and tell us what to do in Arizona. They don't live here, they don't have an interest here. I don't like to see people from out of Prescott come into Prescott and say, you can't do this, you shouldn't do that, this is what we think is right for you, and this is what we're going to do, and this is what we're going to fight for. Can I have more time?
Sure.
I'm kidding, you know, I just, someone else said that, I think. So I wouldn't be swayed by people coming from out of town and telling you what to do. And I think that it's just a wrong approach for people to come in and say what's, what is going to happen is wrong and what they want to happen is right. I think people that have been sitting in your very chairs before you have done an excellent job in preserving Arizona, preserving Prescott for what you now have, people moving here and saying, this is great. They've done a good job in the past. I know you'll do a good job at this, and I think we're going to have a wonderful place. I love Prescott. And I don't want to see it changed. It has changed dramatically from when I was in high school. And I think that you all have that in your heart and you know what's right, and I think you have beat this horse to death, and I think it's time to move on. You know, one other thing is I keep hearing ads about developers and that they're bad. Every one of you lives in a house that was at one time or another a developer's idea. Even the old Hacienda Country Club was a development at one time. Now we have Grand View, Long View, South View, Country View, Desert View, there's, you know, their developers have come to town, created places for people to live and move here. And I think that it's that they get a bad rap when everybody's going, hey, I'm not taking any money on my campaign from developers because they've made this place what it is, and you all, it's your job to create what they're doing to your liking and what the city, the citizens of Prescott want. So without getting into all the facts that have already been presented very well, I had a lot of facts here, but I'm not going to say anymore because you know them all already. I support this and I encourage you to go ahead and vote on this when you can and get it behind us because you have other things on the table that are going to be just as important and you need to move on. So thank you for your time. I don't think I want to answer any questions, but I'll try if you want.
No, you don't have to do that. Thank you, Steve, for your service in the state legislature, and thank you for your recent help on the FOPrU Commission as well. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yep. All right, let's keep moving.
Ralph Hess.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The questions that I want to raise are related to Mr. Palladini's presentation regarding the cost. And I too appreciate the fact that that information was provided to me. What's missing from the presentation is most of the enumerated costs. What, how's that going to translate into dollars and value that the city is transferring to AED under this development agreement? What we have is, what's the value of the water that's reserved? 753 acre feet of, of water rights? What's the cost of the expansions for the airport water reclamation facility that is to assure the AED development that their needs are met in paragraph 2.18? We've specifically heard that the rise of way of access to Section 33, I think is going to be reimbursed by AED, but we don't know what the costs of that are going to be. We don't know what the cost of the Granite Creek crossing is going to be. We don't know what the costs of the Granite Creek Bridge are going to be, what the construction of the North Peavine Trail, what the grade-separated crossing at the Peavine Trail, and the three acres for the library. All of these are costs of which have not been enumerated. So that leads me to the question, have you considered whether Prop 401, which is Article 6, Section 16 of the Prescott Charter, have you considered whether that is applicable to this project? Because if the threshold of Prop 401 has been met, and how do we know whether the threshold's going to be met? Because we don't know what the total costs are to the city for this project. So my question is, one, have you considered the application of 401? And if so, how are you going to be able to determine whether it applies or not?
Thank you, Ralph. Do you want me to move on and come back to that, or do you want to answer it?
Well, I guess I can answer it a couple of things. And that is, is that, is that is, that there's no, you know, there's no way to get into the dollars and cents of what a project's going to cost until you start, you know, designing it and those kinds of things. So, you know, and that can't happen until, until you have assurance that you can, like a developer can develop. And so there's a sort of an order of things that has to happen before you can determine hard costs. We, we do know the, you know, the purchase price of the, of the, what we're calling the W parcel. So, you know, I don't know, I don't know how you, I don't know how you address it. But again, what I think, what the intent of that, that list was, is that I think people assumed, my take is people assumed that the city was going to pay all this money for the cost of the development, and it's not. I think the other thing that's important to note is that expansions of the plant, the water treatment plant are paid for by impact fees. So, and by, you know, so primarily, so growth pays for growth. That's the nature of an impact free, impact fee. So I'm, let me go back. And I think the last question Ralph had to have to do with Article 6. I'm just scrolling down here to get it.
Let's jump to the next public comment, and you can come back to that. Go ahead, Sarah.
Tom Rusing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I, I want to say I thank Mr. LaBarge and Mr. Collins for their comment, and I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Pearce that I don't think time is of the essence. I think doing it right is the important thing. And as we all know, the devil's in the details. And there are changes being made to the development agreement as of yesterday and today, and there will probably be a development agreement draft released today and probably another one, at least. And so my concern is we do this right. And I mentioned that last week on a letter from another individual. Save the Dells has performed an extensive analysis of the development agreement and has submitted comments, extensive comments to the city as well as meeting with the city. And I would encourage citizens to review these comments when they're available on Save the Dells website because it does show how carefully and how concerned we are about the process and the kind of, the type and the extent of concerns we had with the original development agreement. So there's been many changes, so to think that we have it right right now may not be accurate, and we need to keep doing it to. accurate and we need to keep doing it till we have it right. Because if we don't, it's going to come back to haunt us in the future. My comments right now are not as a Save the Dells member, but as a long-term resident of Prescott. And it has to do with not a major issue, but maybe what some people would consider a more minor issue in this. But to me, it's not, and that's mass grading. And that's the extensive grading, scraping, and leveling of the land with resultant loss of the unique topsoil and the unique vegetation and wildlife, as well as the ability for erosion control. It also destroys a lot of the unique topographical contours of this area and potentially archaeological sites. This used to be something that I would see in Phoenix or Los Angeles and I would shake my head and say, what are they thinking? Why are they doing this to their city? And then I noticed it in Prescott Valley. And now unfortunately, I'm seeing it in Prescott with the Deepwell Ranch, Walden Farms and others. And it's a technique that's mentioned multiple times in this development agreement and it concerns me. Who benefits from this? As far as I can tell, it's only the developer. It's a quick, easy, cheap technique that allows quick building at less cost that benefits the developer. Who loses? The citizens. Because we're losing the character of our community, the things that make Prescott special and unique and our heritage. When did we as a community decide that this type of technique was okay in our hometown? If we're truly interested in preserving our heritage and making Prescott, in preserving the things that make Prescott unique and special, and our, preserving our wildlife and habitat and our quality of life, this is not something that we should be doing. We should be controlling our growth, not only the quantity, but the quality. And to me, mass grading does not meet that criteria and I'm concerned about that. And so I'm not sure when as a city, when we as citizens made that decision, but I think we need to readdress that and look at what kind of development we really want happening in our community. We should have control on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Hey, Mayor, I could address the Charter issue. So the Charter, the Article 6.
Make sure there's your microphone there.
The Charter provision in Article 6 starts out by saying that there's a 40, any project, and it defines project, that's over $40 million, has to be approved by the voters. That's adjusted by CPI since 2011, and I did a little online calculator here, that's about another $10 million. So right now, we're at a $50 million threshold before the project has to get approved by the voters. I'm very confident that this project is not costing, you know, if you take into account the purchase of land and those kinds of things, particularly if you take into account the purchase of land that's funded by grants and resales and things like that, that it's nowhere near that $50 million threshold.
Very good, thanks, John. Sarah, just give me a status update on what you have left for public comments.
I have two more public comment cards here in chambers and I do not see anyone in Zoom with their hand raised. There was a hand up earlier, but it looks like it's gone down, so.
Okay.
Oh no, I'm sorry, it's back up again.
Okay.
So I have one.
Let's do the two here in the room. I just want to make sure we get through this and to the next item.
Todd, and I apologize, sir, I can't read your last name. Guyler, thank you.
Well, per usual, I get to follow Senator Pierce and he steals my talking points every time, so I'll keep this closed. I'll echo everything he just said. My name's Todd Guyler, I'm a fifth generation in Prescott, Arizona. I can answer the prior speaker's question about when did it become okay to lop the top off of mountains and do grading? We did that up there at the Prescott Mall. So I don't know how old that is, but that was in the 90s. I'm a current sitting member of the Arizona Game of Fish and I've heard a lot of folks today talk to you about their worries about crossings and everything else. But in looking at the plans for this upcoming development, Mr. Geese has one thing in there and that's called a resort. And that's kind of his beachfront property looking south. The one thing about that parcel of land that he's going to be giving you in a conservation easement is that is a wildlife corridor. And in Game and Fish, we worry about wildlife corridors because we have to have areas for animals to move back and forth in their natural habitat. If you look at our sister city to the east, we don't have that right now. Everybody was upset at our last time we, we actually did an antelope capture out there to preserve the, preserve the animals. And if you think back, for some of us guys that are old and have gray hair, we used to have a population of antelope at Willa Lake. We don't now. It's because the councils back then didn't show foresight and they didn't have the gravel in their gut to make a hard call. And that was to capture that herd and translocate them out of the area. They just went away. In my world, down at Arizona Game of Fish, that's called mortality, that's death. You're going to see no antelope here in the next few years in any of your corridors going at, out 89A because we're already in the process of having talks about doing a capture to preserve that herd and move them up north out of this area. And it has to occur. With the developer, what he's done is he's giving you a conservation easement to look south. He has to have that in order to sell rooms in a resort. But more importantly, the city of Prescott has to have that easement to go on ahead and propagate a species. That species in that easement has to have a few things. And thank goodness, we had some ranchers here ahead of us that went on ahead and put the infrastructure in so Joe Baines doesn't have to go out and walk up and down hills and start figuring out a program and a project, for instance, in you, which costs money. The rancher went on ahead and put in drinkers and he put in waters. Now, if we can get a little rain, that'll really, really help out Arizona Game of Fish with the deer and the species out in that area. But more importantly, you already have the feed because there's no animals called cattle on the landscape. And the carrying capacity is there for watchable wildlife, something that this area tries to go on ahead and promote. And I'm going to go over for just a sec, I apologize. But if we don't do this right, if we don't look at this development and we go forward, and I echo Senator Pierce, get it done, get it happening, and make sure that this stays in the city of Prescott. Because if we don't, all the developer has to do is walk over here on Fair Street and you're cut out of the deal. And I can guarantee you that the planning and the, everything that these two gentlemen have done over here that presents you with all of your binders, I call it the notebook of doom, every month I get that thing. But you guys have a plan. And if we don't have that plan, then you have an area out here in the Dells that looks like Valley, Arizona or Ash Fork. And we can't let the county go on ahead and have everybody with each house have a straw on the ground and put an effluent back in or recharge. I've got a condemned well because we don't have, we didn't have at the time my house was built. I'm a fourth generation in this house. We didn't plan ahead that far, and so I had to drill another well up back. So I urge this council to move forward because we have a unique situation to preserve the Dells. The rocks are not going to move and we're not building any houses on Point of Rocks. But if we do this right, we have a wildlife corridor with a conservation easement in perpetuity for everybody in this room to enjoy, and I think they need to keep that in the forefront of their mind. Thank you for your time, I yield back to the chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Guyler. One more here in the chambers.
One more here, yep.
Kyle, you're a lot taller than me. Bill Feldmeyer, my home here in Prescott is at 434 South Alarkin, which is about a block and a half that way, at the dead end. I've lived in the downtown area most of my 45-plus years here, here in Yavapai County. And in reflecting about coming here today and thinking about it last night, I remembered that I was in this very room four and a half decades ago, when we were talking about the survival of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, because we were in the midst of a declining population. And, and in fact, the city was in, was in collapse and it was in chaos. There wasn't enough, and I'll use this kind of, this term loosely, but there wasn't enough plywood to cover the storefront windows sitting around the courthouse. And today, that's fortunately a lot different. I do, I do remember though, as a, as a young, young man with a young family and a growing family, that if I didn't have a job by Labor Day weekend's close, that it was going to be a really long, very lean winter. And in those early days that I had here in Prescott, I had several of those very lean winters. So let me fast forward to today and just this morning, as a matter of fact. Today's my anniversary, so I'll take those congratulations. My wife is, is happy that we made it this far and I'm not sure we're going to make it another 25 unless she's pushing me in the wheelchair. But in any case, I'm happy to report to you that I rode my bicycle with a couple of buddies mine in the Spence Basin Trail area. Remarkable trails there, and it's not the first time I've been there. There were a lot of people out there today. And two decades ago, we didn't even consider that. We never even thought about that. 10 years ago, we started making those moves. And we're fortunate enough today to be, have a destination, Prescott Destination for Trails. It's remarkable. So I finished my ride and I drove back home, South Alarkin Street, and on the way back, I drove by a vastly improved YRM-C hospital complex. Who would have thought of that 45 years ago? From there, I, I mean, I came by a splash, a brand new splash next to a brand new hotel that will, in a short period of time, hook up to a grant that was used to update the Granite Creek corridor and the fingers of the trails that will take off from that corridor. It's just a remarkable thing that's happened here in Prescott over the last several years. And guess what? As I drove through South Cortez Street on my way home, there's no plywood on any of these buildings like there was 45 years ago. When I was in front of this council with a couple of different faces, not too many months ago, I was here for some approvals on the Deepwell Ranch. And I was stunned by the number of people that were here to complain about, my iPad just went off. My iPad goes off, my brain goes away. And I was stunned at the number of negative voices that were there complaining about the, the Deepwell Ranch and the James family and, and where that foundation money was going to end up going to promote and protect and preserve our community. More recently, I watched from a distance when the council unfortunately did not approve of the Spring, the Stringfield Ranch annexation into the city. And, and there again, negative voices influenced two of you here. And as a result, no annexation. But the result is the project's moving forward. Warp speed in the county with somewhat 80 units more than there would have been if it was within the city limits. Now the same, same number of negative voices and more are screaming about a development agreement and an annexation that will help promote and protect and preserve an important part and feature of, of our community. I don't need to list the ways that that development agreement and an annexation into the city is going, is going to assist us. You already know that and we've heard some of that today. So what I'm going to ask you is, don't listen to the negative voices in the positive community that we've built over a number of decades. I support this agreement and the annexation, and I hope you do too. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Feldmeyer. Happy anniversary. All right, one more on Zoom?
Yes, one more. Mr. Levy. You'll need to unmute yourself to speak. Mr. Levy, please unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Rory Levy.
Go ahead, you've got three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, so I'll start over. So I was listening to this statement at the AED session, study session in June 15. And I understand from Councilmember Blair's statement, entire land development code would need to be rewritten and is currently in process and it might take six months. So this wondering, because I had a phone call with Mayor Mangarelli on April 16th where I was told that the wireless communication facility sections would be not changed, they would be retained in the land development code. And just trying to clarify the two statements on what is being done. Is, are they being entirely rewritten, which means that that would include the wireless communication facilities? It's a question for you, Mayor.
Mayor, Mr. Levy, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think we're going a little bit off topic on, on this matter and, and I, I think I can provide some context. The discussion about revising the land development code primarily came up in this context to talk about airport protection primarily, and maybe some other things. So that's a process that we have to go through, but we, we're really not agendized to talk about cell towers, you know, in the, in the broader sense. I mean, we talked about cell towers in the context of development, but in the broader sense of whether or not, you know, we're going to amend the city code on, on special use permits and those kinds of things is outside the scope of the agenda item.
Mr. Levy, do you have anything else?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Palladini does not need to answer for you. I am bringing up a relevant statement that you made to me in a commitment and a statement by Councilmember Blair. And I don't think it's getting into special use permits or cell towers specifically. So I disagree respectfully with Mr. Palladini's. And first of all, I don't think it needed, my statement needed to be interrupted by him. I would like to know your clarification and Councilmember Blair's clarification because there's two different things being said, one more recently being last Tuesday.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Levy. And just to address that, just because we're going to look at the land development code and as Mr. Palladini already stated, a lot of that has to do with what we're doing around the airport to ensure that we protect our airport around, the development around that airport. In regard to the cell tower provision, at this point, we don't have any intention of changing that in the land development code. I don't know, Blair, do you need any clarification on that?
Nothing other than the fact that no matter what code you have on the books, from time to time, laws change, people change, and we need to go back and look at some of the things that are outdated. We're constantly asked by the fire department to include things, but they very seldom take things out. Same way with other departments that we work with. So we, we've heard about how we need to adjust our city charter. Maybe that is so as well. You know, when you talk about a general plan, it's been 10 years and we need to go back and look at the scope of a general plan, a strategic plan. We need to look at our zoning codes, we need to look at whether we make lots smaller or bigger and just how we move forward in the community. So it's a process and it's not something that affects what this gentleman says right now, it's just something that we have to put on our workload.
Yep, very good, thank you. Well, thank you all for the public comments today, really appreciate you being here and commenting on this development agreement. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant, Mr. Geese, to come up and share any thoughts he has.
Mayor members of council, how are you? Um, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna.
I'm good.
Thank you, Steve. I've been through this a few times in my career so far. And, and we're getting to the point where obviously there's a little bit of agitation out there, a little lack of focus for some people. And, you know, it, it's just getting to be time to vote on this issue from my perspective. I think the most important thing that I can say today is this, my life is ruled by contracts. That's what I do. In fact, I think most people that are in business, their lives are ruled by contracts. I'm going to buy a load of hay, it's going to cost $12.50 and the money is due per these terms and conditions. The mutual promises that are addressed in the development agreement are very balanced, in my opinion and my experience. City of Prescott has their promises that they intend to keep. Arizona Eco Development has their promises. I can assure you that I look forward to the day that the title for the Point of Rocks leaves the possession of Arizona Eco Develop and it gets to the city of Prescott forever more. There is, we're, three years ago, it was July when we actually applied officially. We have, we have stayed the course, we've been consistent. The Point of Rocks has always been part of the deal, it continues to be a centerpiece of the deal, and, and we look forward to consummating the deal. The Rite of Referendum is The right of referendum is something that all Arizonans have, something that we have to wait for. In the meantime, we can be working on the TUTT reports and the documents that will transfer titles and the two parties can keep their mutual promises. That is our intent at Arizona Eco Development. We hope that this will happen sooner versus later. It's either the July 12th or 13th was the date that was talked about in the previous meeting last Tuesday. If I had my way, I would ask for you guys to vote that day and move forward into a future that I think is going to be mutually beneficial, where we have the public, the city and the private sector winning. And we can hopefully restore some calm and peace to our community and trust. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have specifically. I guess I'll tackle the telecom again. We don't do telecom. The private sector does. I will reiterate that to have a telecom plan in advance as part of our master planning makes perfect sense to me. But that is a, we'll have to reach out and find someone to do that for us, but I don't have a problem with that at all. It seems to be a big concern.
Any questions for Jason from the council? Thank you. All right, thank you.
I think I heard everybody's questions answered by what you said with standing behind the agreement as a businessman, as a developer, as a contractor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wissing, did you have something?
Oh, I would just like to reiterate that, Mr. Geese, would you be willing to work with us, the city, as far as future planning for police and fire substations?
I don't have any problem there, Kathy. The bottom line is, for those that weren't listening last week, the original submittal contemplated fire and police, public protection land for those uses. That's positive as it relates to our development. And so the answer is yes. If that's something that the city wants and needs, that we don't have a problem figuring that out at all. I would ask though, that if the city has a need, that we either mark it in the development agreement and move on. We don't create, this isn't a rabbit hole issue, but this isn't really a deal point to me. Time is of the essence here. Let's get done. So if we'd like to just tag it generally in the development agreement, if that would make you feel good, I have no opposition to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I'd like to make a closing comment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Over this series of public comment meetings, we've heard from over 78 people who have submitted comments. And a lot of them were expecting to have their comments read into the record and listened to. Many of them were not allowed to do that for various reasons, just because the growing volume of comments necessitated more of a cumulative analysis of what their concerns are, but not being specific. I mean, today alone, we listened to 11 comments from the public and on Zoom. And of those comments, we saw some significant improvements in our development agreement due to those comments. I think we have an obligation. I know Mr. Feldmeyer said, don't listen to the negative people, but as representatives of this community, we have an obligation to listen to them. We have an obligation to consider their concerns. Doesn't mean that we'll agree with them, but in order to have public trust, those concerns should be heard and considered. I also heard pretty directly that there's concerns that personally I'm against growth and development. That couldn't be farther from the truth. Over the last four years, I voted for hundreds of improvements and approvals for projects. The reason why I made the statement that I wouldn't accept contributions from developers was simply so that the public at large would not think that there was influence because of that. And I've made that statement several times that developments and projects will be, and I'll decide those based upon their merits. And I want to make sure that that's clear. I understand that growth does happen and that we are fortunate to have growth because of the growing attractiveness of our community. But we need to be obligated to make sure that that growth is well planned, it's approved at a proper pace, so that our public services aren't overwhelmed by too much of that growth. So again, I want to make sure that my position, and I think this council's position is pretty clear, on how we move deliberately forward to consider all of these concerns that we've heard. And we're making the modifications to make sure this final agreement is as positive as possible. And I think that's appropriate. So having enough time as this development agreement is refined for the public to understand it, I think is all very positive. And I just want to make sure that that is clarified, at least from my position. So thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Anything else from the council? All right, let's move on to item 3B, please.
Discussion regarding Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo Grounds lease.
At this point, because I can't feed my family on the mayor's salary and I work for Prescott Frontier Days, I have a conflict of interest, which I have stated with the attorney several months ago. So I will be exiting the room and allow Mayor Pro Tem to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. John, do you want to set the table for us a little bit on this item and the history of this lease and its changes?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. Did I do something? I did something. I keep putting my hand down. Mark, help me. I'm looking for my documents. So this item, Mayor, or Mayor Pro Tem and council.
John, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. We're going, I'm going to let like 30 seconds for transition time and then we'll get going.
Screw myself here. I have two, I don't know why, I put it over here somewhere. So I'm trying.
You know, a lawyer sitting between those two guys is really dangerous.
All right, ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Bryn, is there any way you can grab the door? Thank you. Oh, Joe's got it. Thank you.
So this is a discussion and we talked about, talked about this topic with you in an exec session to basically get direction on the terms. So currently, and this is about the Prescott Frontier Days, Prescott Rodeo Grounds lease with the city. So currently, the PFD, yeah, PFD has a lease with the city. And I want to just sort of highlight some of the current terms of the lease. So the lease term is 25 years. And remember, that's from July 2016. So it's 25 years with an additional five-year sort of automatic renewal. The use of the premises has a limitation, I would call it, for the rodeo itself and then other rodeo events, agriculture, livestock, and equestrian events. And then it says other events or activities as authorized or permitted by the city. So that's the current use by PFD. And then it talks about PFD is the manager of the property. And then again, reiterates that where there are other events, that the rodeo, PFD has to consult with the city to determine which or requires city approval. And it talks about income from the premises gets, in part gets rolled back into improvements, capital improvements, those kinds of things. I'm going through this briefly because I think most people are familiar with the, with the, with the current lease. It also talks about a master plan that the city was going to solicit proposals for and do a master plan for the rodeo grounds. So that was going to be a city obligation during the initial five years. And we're running up on that as we speak. And then it, you know, a couple of other minor issues. The PFD is responsible for the utilities, the utility bills essentially. And then the city didn't have any repair or maintenance obligations. In other words, PFD does those. But there are, but the city, like typical, typically a landlord, has a responsibility for sort of the structural, mechanical, sort of big ticket items, capital type items that have to be improved. So that's our current lease with Prescott Frontier Days, you know, that we're living under today. What's, what should be obvious is what's missing in this lease. Come on. There we go.
Somebody that knows how to work.
Not lifting. So what's missing in the current lease is that Prescott Frontier Days doesn't pay any rent to the city. Essentially, it's an agreement and then again, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but it's, you know, it's because of all the other benefits that are created by, particularly by the World's oldest rodeo, which you'll hear later on about. So, but, but what happened is that the, is that the PFD came to, came to the city. And I'm just going to try to make this a little bit more readable and asked if there was a willingness or interest in renegotiating the lease. So myself and Chris Graff from PFD and Don Zavala, their attorney, have sort of worked on this at a staff level, I would call it, from the city perspective. And this is what we discussed at our executive session. So I want to kind of highlight some, some key terms to what's proposed. You're not voting on this today. This is for your discussion. With key terms is that, is that it's a 30-year term from approval with two 10-year options, so up to 50 years. But there's, again, critical, there's a rent provision now and it's 5% of gross revenues after the PFD earns 1.25 million per year, up to $125,000. So that's, you know, so the one, we got to the 1.25 million a year because that's sort of the average, general or average revenue that Prescott Frontier Days earns. So we're talking about, when you expand the revenue, the city is essentially a partner in that, in that expansion of revenue from the rodeo grounds. So that's how we came to that number. But that obviously up to $125,000 a year is up to $125,000 more than what the city now currently is paid under the lease. It also kind of clarifies the, what the property is and it's the rodeo grounds, all of the rodeo grounds, except the five buildings that are currently used by either other tenants or the city of Prescott, our IT department or code enforcement and that. And then it also expands the permitted uses. It expands it to any lawful use, including the rodeo, the fair, carnival, concerts, equestrian events, and RV park. And then utility connect, with utility connections, community clubs, restaurants, food and liquor services. So in other words, if this lease is approved by the city, the city and Prescott Frontier Days essentially have a traditional kind of arms-length commercial deal where the landlord, you pay us rent, you get to do on the property what is legally allowed to do on the property. Obviously, what the limitation on legally allowed is, is, you know, zoning wouldn't, would be required or have to, whatever uses have to meet zoning, would have to meet setbacks. If there are liquor sales, would have to meet liquor, state liquor laws, those kinds of things. So that's kind of the real quick summary that's in the body of the lease itself, based on a request. And then some of the other sort of details, we talk about gross revenue, that's defined in the agreement. And it's a bunch of things that make up gross revenue that, again, once, once the, once it gets above 1.25 million, the city gets a share, a 5% share of that as a lease, up to 125,000. There are a bunch, there are some exceptions in there, particularly, you know, well, I'll get to the exceptions, but I also wanted to point out that there, that the gross revenue is also reduced if that money is invested into capital improvement. So in other words, if gross revenue is derived from the RV park, additional gross revenue, that gets to be credited back into the cost of developing the RV park, the streets, the roads, the utilities, those kinds of things for the RV park. So in other words, there's an investment of additional revenue and then once that investment's recouped, then it becomes gross, then it becomes payable or creditable gross revenue towards the cities, towards the city as rent. And so this also includes revenue derived from other users of the rodeo grounds. So if the rodeo grounds, let's say, has the county fair there, that it's not the county fair's revenue that credit counts, but it's the rent or payments from the county fair as a user to Prescott Frontier Days. So as, as, as the rodeo grounds gets more use by other entities, by an RV park, by, let's say, a restaurant, it's, that revenue then goes into the pot and the city gets a percentage of it. There are a number of exceptions or does not include gross revenue and primarily it's prize money, if they're sponsored clubs, you know, annual revenue for membership in sponsored clubs, donations or gifts. In other words, if some, if some benefactor wants to donate $500,000 to the PFD so they can do some project, that's not included in gross revenue, obviously. And so there's a list of those. I want to say this though, that there is a, there is a, the $125 cap is adjusted upwards. If any one or all of those five buildings that are sort of excluded from the lease is, the use of that building is no longer needed by the current user, then it goes to the PFD for its use and the maximum goes up by $5,000 for each building. So the total of the not to exceed number could be up to 150,000 a year. And again, I want to emphasize that this is a, becomes a more traditional commercial lease between the city as the landlord and PFD as a tenant. So we discussed it in more detail. It also, it also provides, you know, that PFD does most, if not all, of the improvements now. There are a couple of exceptions, again, some of the underground systems, HVAC, those kinds of things. And again, that's typical of a lease in a regular commercial lease. So, so again, this is a, this is a, to me, a really sort of straightforward arms-length deal between the city as landlord and PFD as a tenant. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, John. And how long has this been in progress, these changes?
I think we started talking about this, I want to say January, February in sort of broad concept. And then we started sort of working in earnest. March?
Okay. Mr. Tenney, you had a couple of questions?
I did, just a couple of quick questions. I noticed the 30-year lease with two 10-year options to extend. How does the 10-year option to extend pieces have by mutual agreement? Prescott Frontier Days wants to do that, we also want to do that. And how is that determined? Would that come to the vote of the city council in, I guess, 2051 to?
No. Hold on.
Sure.
So it, let me get to the term provision, hold on. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're pointing.
If it's focusing on other things.
It's a long agreement.
So the renewal language is on page six. Automatically it continues for each 10-year term. And again, the reason for that, so the parties could affirmatively cancel the lease, but it's automatically sent in. And the reason for that primarily is this capital improvement investment. When you put money into a capital improvement, you want at least 30 years, give or take, worth of use out of it, because that's kind of the viable life of most buildings. People hate to think that, but 30- People hate to think that, but 30 years is kind of your investment period. It also coincides with a lot of borrowing type things. So that's, that's why that it goes, it goes out that far.
Makes sense. Nope. The, the thought that I have in my mind, I'm, this sounds on a personal level, sounds terrific to me for now and for the foreseeable future. I'm trying to project what it looks like for the city 50 years from now, and that's harder for me to imagine.
Right. And again, you know, if you, and I'll let Chris or somebody talk to what sort of the vision is, but we also talked about, you know, creating some sort of, we added some language in there about consulting and cooperating and some sort of master planning of what's going to happen. But I would, I would, based on the conversations I've had, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I think the rodeo grounds will look significantly different in 20 years from now than it looks like today. I think it'll, but at the same time, I think that's beneficial. The benefit to this is it's not necessarily just the rent, the city's collection, as you expand the uses on the property and you use it more, it generates, you know, tourism, it generates direct sales tax, generates maybe bed tax, depending on how RV parks are, are, you know, charged. So there's both a direct, you know, revenue in rent, direct revenue in sales tax, and then indirect revenue in terms of the more events you have, the more people come to town.
Sure. Super. And you led into my second question, there may be other folks in the room who can answer as well, it's very yes or no. Does the current zoning for this area allow for an RV park?
I don't, and off the top of my head, I don't know that. I believe it does, but yeah, we haven't, we haven't looked at the zoning itself. Yeah, we can look into that.
But if it's not, if it's not allowed, then even though it's listed in this agreement, it wouldn't be permissible because it's.
Right. Unless, unless the zoning were changed.
Is that something that would come to?
If necessary, but I don't, I don't, I believe it's, I believe it's commercial zoning in that, that, but I couldn't confirm it a hundred percent.
I have a question.
Councilmember Rusing?
I have a question. How many acres is, comprises the rodeo grounds? It must be.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Joe told me that, I would have no clue.
You know, I, I drive by frequently and you know, it, it just doesn't look very used most of the year. And I think that this is a, an attempt to find more uses to it and kind of bring that area, area to life. And I think that this lease is a very friendly lease. It's very generous and I look upon it as we're becoming partners and it's important that we support our Prescott rodeo. Thank you.
Councilman Chisca.
Thank you. Well, I'll tell you what, ever since I've been on council, all I've heard from council people is, boy, I wish we could find other uses for the rodeo grounds. And it sounds like you guys are doing that. That's pretty awesome. I am so happy that that's happening. Hopefully you'll have a covered arena out there one of these days, not the big arena, but a covered arena that we could have a bench in. And that would be really cool. And what is the inflation factor from the standpoint of the, you got 1,250,000. Does that go up every year?
I don't believe we included a CPI adjustment in, in the agreement. So it's really kind of fixed at 125 up to 150 in, in terms of revenue. I think my, because it's, it's my.
I'm, I'm talking about their annual revenue certainly is going to, you know.
I see. That's the idea. In other words, the more their revenue grows, you know, we don't adjust our cap, but nor do we adjust the 1.25 billion, because that's sort of the average revenue that's been generated over a time, let's say a certain time period. And so that's our baseline and any, and so even if you had sort of just natural inflation and that causes the average to go up above 1.25, the city benefits by way of the 5%.
Sure.
If we purposely didn't include that sort of inflationary factor, because again, we're trying to say, here's the baseline, everything you do that generate, that, that we can, you know, that generates the revenue above that, now we're sort of partners in that revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, there's a $150,000 ceiling on that, right?
Yes. If, if every building, yeah, every one of the five buildings, as it gets taken down, that's 5,000 to the cap.
So today it stands at 125.
Correct.
But if we, if those buildings are.
Yeah. If you look at, where do we put that in? The, the property's definition has an exclusion, the NT club, the city IT department.
Gotcha.
You know, the 4H building. So those are the exception, those are certain, those are sort of excluded from the lease premises.
Okay. Mr. Baines, you have something for us?
Thank you. Councilmember Rusing hit on a couple of my topics, but essentially, you know, my years being involved with the rodeo, we have, the city owns an underperforming asset in the middle of Prescott, roughly 40 acres. This agreement allows us to have a partner in those capital improvements that could take it to the next level. Somebody mentioned it here earlier. We, we know that there's more capacity there. We know we can do more concerts, we know we can be more creative with that, but it's really difficult for the city to be an event promoter, for us to, to bring events, you know, we typically have events come to us, we approve the events, we're not the event promoter. So with this partnership, that's, that will allow us to do that. Also allows us to make capital investment with a partner in some things that will bring additional revenue. So I don't know that it's as much about the rent, because reaching that ceiling is optimistically good, but probably won't happen, but it's really about having a partner to make that underperforming asset perform.
Right. Mr. Graff, would you like to share a little bit of your, your vision for the rodeo grounds?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council. I can hit on something that Mr. Tenney talked about is that the newest building out there is about 50 years old. And we're looking at some of the buildings, the Justin Room in particular, that's where our gold box, buckle box sits that, that is our performing sponsor that, that night. They walk across the crumbling concrete ceiling. So not only safety, but just, of course, that room was also built for jockeys. Our six foot cowboys are not happy with it, let me tell you. That needs to be rebuilt now. Restrooms on the east end of the grandstands. The only bathrooms we have that service the grandstands are in the Mackin building. A men's and women's bathroom that's really capable of serving the Mackin building. So we have a bunch of porta potties, which I hear every year and I'll hear again this year, I'm not using that, I'm not coming back to this rodeo, I'm not sitting there, don't do this to me. So that, those restrooms are important. And the rest, they're important to the ADA, things we need to watch too. So it'll put bathrooms up in the grandstands and it'll also put bathrooms down in the vendor area. So it'll, it'll really double them and it'll be a cleaner, much cleaner deal. Bleachers over the bucking chutes. That every, every large rodeo you go to has that and has had it for a while. And all these investments are just, the 1888 club we envisioned, which will be above the Justin Room, it's going to be an investor type deal. These invest, investors are going to pay for probably a lot of our, our infrastructure improvements, which, which will help us a lot. As far as inflation, we could raise that 1.25 as long as we don't raise that other part, okay? I'm all right with that. But into that $150,000 check, as I've told Palladini, I'm happy to write that check, because that means the rodeo is doing extremely, extremely well. And I think any board president down the road or board down the road will be happy to write those checks. So, and we hope to do that and we hope to be partners with, with Prescott. And there'll be times where, as in COVID, which extremely was a negative impact on, on the rodeo, that we're going to come to you and maybe ask for a little bit of assistance, maybe helping getting us, us jumpstarted on those bathrooms, because last year was tough on us. I'm just not going to, I'm not going to paint that picture any other way, so.
So this was your second pandemic that your rodeo has?
Yeah, there's been another one with depressions, World War II, World Wars.
For plan for another pandemic in another hundred years, because that seems to be our schedule.
That would be great. That would, that would be two 50 year leases, that'd be perfect. Yeah. But we, but we survived. You know, Prescott is the rodeo and the rodeo is Prescott, so we survived. So if there's any other questions, I'll try and answer them, but our intent is to make events happen there and make that rodeo grounds. And we do have RV spots right now.
Okay.
You know, when we, what we use for equine events. So that's the intent is, you know, as permanent RV spots, they wouldn't be because rodeo time, equine, you know, we'd have to move people out. I mean, as you see like the World Series or the high school finals, which we have now here in Prescott, there's, there's no place for an RV, unless it has a horse trailer on it. So I don't know if that.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate you, Chris, and the rodeo foundation board for bringing this forward. I know the old lease was only less than five years into its 25 year term, and there was a provision in there for a master plan to be developed by next, next month. And I think because of the pandemic, there wasn't a whole lot of interest in trying to get together and put together a master plan. But clearly, in my opinion, the rodeo activities over the course of a year were quite frankly, an underperforming asset. And with this lease, it does allow you to really develop the grounds and the activities much more expansively for the benefit of the, the organization and the, and the city as well. So I know one of the provisions here is allowing the, the organization to make its determination of its sole opportunity to put in new facilities and build things like that. And with the parent plans that you have, you've got to have those long-term periods of time to be able to make those investments, build your revenue, and then be able to have a return on the investments. I know when the electrical system and the lights were upgraded, that was a lot of money. But boy, it was just a, almost a drop in the bucket of how much overall needs to be done for the rodeo grounds and the facilities in the future. So I think this will be a benefit for not only the Prescott Frontier Days, but also the city at large going forward. I would like to suggest that maybe if we continue to be effective partners, both the city and the Frontier Days organization, that be a periodic review of progress, whether it's every six months or a quarter or once a year, so we can monitor how well the plans are going forward without having to have this council or future councils reviewing every plan that you guys want to do. Because I know that it takes a commitment and the investment and then getting those facilities built and generating revenue is something that you don't want to have somebody second guessing you every two years. So I think overall it's going to be a benefit for the community, for the city, and I think it's almost long overdue.
And I can address that, Mayor Protem, the section eight of the agreement does say that PFD agrees to provide an annual public presentation to the council on its strategic plans for development of the property and then, and meet, and then as well as meet with city staff at least semi-annually to discuss specifics. So it'll be sort of staff level every, every six months, give or take, and then a more formal presentation on an annual basis of the strategic or the, or the development plan.
Councilman Blair?
Hey, thank you. I was just going to bring up the fact that you're here every year to give us a rough blush of how well you did or in last year's opinion, how well you didn't do. So that tied to having a presentation every year at the same time to share with us your plans for the upcoming year or what you have done is probably in the best interest of everybody.
Now it helps me a little bit with vacation too, I only have to take off one day. But I want to say this, it's, it's, it's fantastic to work with Joe. And I think we probably twice a month at least, even on off rodeo, see either, either Jim or myself or somebody. And he's great to work with and we'll continue to make sure Joe knows what we're doing and where we're, the direction we're looking at, so.
Great. Well, thank you all for being here today and I look forward to your presentation at our next meeting.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I've got an update from Bryn about the zoning, just if you wanted it. It's multifamily, high density and RV parks are not allowed, so a rezoning would be necessary.
Okay. Good information. Without any other questions or comments from council? Any public comment?
We do have one hand raised in Zoom and it's Howard Mechanic. You should be able to unmute yourself now, Mr. Mechanic.
Thank you. And I certainly agree that this is an underperforming asset for the city and I appreciate the fact that we can have more activities there. And I appreciate the city wanting to help out a nonprofit organization that's been around for a long time. My question is, is basically how much is a city helping out this, this nonprofit organization? What is the market value of that property as far as a lease goes? So the council and the public understand how big a subsidy the city is providing this nonprofit. Comparing the market value of that, of a rental, a long-term rental with no CPI increase, a limit at $125,000, that could go up $5,000 for a building, that's not $5,000 a month, that's $5,000 a year. My understanding is some of those buildings are 10,000 square feet. I'm guessing maybe they're, they're paying 10% of the market value, but we don't know. Maybe council doesn't care. But if you do care, we need to know how much of a subsidy does this involve? Because I think it's a worthwhile venture. But let's have a decent deal here. I also would like to know, for the sake of transparency here, and some issues been brought up recently, and it was just mentioned that the Frontier Days came to the city around January. I wanted to check to see, because I understand the mayor is, has an employment contract and he approached the organization to expand event promotion there, and that's what this is all about, was what about, when, when did that happen? And is the mayor going to get any type of, I understand he's getting a salary, but is he getting any performance commissions or performance bonuses based on the amount of events there? I think we need some transparency. I see no reason that that should be kept secret. What is the contract this organization has with the mayor? The organization as a nonprofit should release this information? The mayor should release this information? And that's basically my issue. I think it's a great idea to expand the use of this place. Let's do it at a reasonable deal for the city and a reasonable deal for the, for them. I haven't been part of this executive committee discussions. Is this lease available for the public to see? Is this posted on the website? If not, please post it so we can analyze it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mechanic. A couple of things I'd like to address with that, as I'm sure we'll see in our next presentation at our next voting meeting, the rodeo provides millions of dollars of tax benefits to this community. It is a huge economic driver. So while it may feel like a subsidy, it's actually helping us to provide more tax revenue for our community and by allowing PFD to expand their operations there and expand their tax revenue, that's ultimately benefit for the city of Prescott. In terms of Mayor Mangarelli, my understanding is as soon as he was discussing a position with PFD, that was disclosed to the mayor or to Mr. Palladini, Mr. Mangarelli has recused himself from every council meeting that has been discussing the rodeo lease. And here today also disclosed his conflict of interest and excused himself. And lastly, I would point you to Sunday's Courier columns, if you have more questions about Mayor Mangarelli's role, that was explained in a column on Sunday in the paper. Any other questions or comments from council? from council? With that, I think it sounds like there's support for this lease moving forward to a voting agenda hopefully here in the near future.
July 13.
That sounds great. With that, this meeting is adjourned. It is 3:30. Let's take a couple-minute break, and we'll be back for our voting meeting.